Good morning, y'all. It's ten AM, Tuesday, December twenty first. And I'm gonna, we're gonna open up with a prayer.
Father in heaven, we call your precious name this morning, thanking you, Father, for the many blessings you've bestowed upon us. Want to thank you, Father God, for another day that we've never seen before.
Yeah.
And we pray, O Lord, that we be happy in it.
Yeah.
Father, we just thank you for all that you've done for Newton County down through this year. And we want to thank you, O Lord, for, for the ones that contributed. And we thank you for this staff, this court, and all the volunteers that, that volunteer their services for Newton County. Father God, coming out to this court, we pray that we use good, sound judgment on the decisions that we make this morning. And more than all, that it will be pleasing to you, Father God. And we pray, Father, that we can do things that continually improve the citizenship here in this, this county of Newton. And we just thank you so much. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Uh, like I told the meeting order, uh, we do have corn. Uh, I acknowledge the guests here. I'm gonna open it up to public, uh, public hearing. And we did have, uh, Mr. David Kelly. All right, as far as the minutes from the previous meeting, KK, do you have?
I'm still working, Judge. I'm hoping Christmas holiday I'll have him called in.
Okay. Uh, all right, we'll move on along to, uh, um, deliberate and consider action on the following items. Uh, item number one is approved to take action on TDM receivables in the form of a payment plan. Um, you know, we had the meeting here a while back. Uh, about the one point two million that we owed TDM. And they said they was gonna work on it, but, um, they'd come back and said they want the full one point two million. And talk about a payment plan, uh, you know, how to pay it back, uh, you know, they wanted like a two-year plan, you know? So, with the one point two million, um, I propose paying four hundred thousand in January. Then, uh, we got it on the list, sell some of the property that was bought out. Like the Bryson and the Thompsons property, take that money and pay it toward the, the balance. And then, in January of twenty five, uh, either pay another four hundred thousand or what's left. Oh. So.
You know, my thoughts on that, uh, so just for the record, because we are recording and got people online and all that sort of thing, somebody may watch it later. How much of this money is coming from the two thousand and eleven era, or let me back it up? Money we're having to pay back, how much of the one point two million is coming from the one, from the two thousand and eleven era that far back?
Two hundred and twenty seven thousand.
So we're paying two hundred and twenty seven thousand from thirteen years ago?
Yes.
Okay? And then we're paying a million or right out of there?
Eight hundred and something. Uh, I remember you were saying probably, how much? Eight eighty six?
Eight oh two, eight oh six.
So it's really not a million too?
No, it's a little bit less than a million.
Okay, all right, that's, that's. So, so the eight hundred and six thousand is from two thousand and eighteen to date, right?
It's on the Harvey buyout.
Yeah.
It's, so it's two thousand and eighteen.
Yes.
To date. So that's a six-year period. So they're wanting PayMac over something that happened thirteen years ago and six years ago. And they want it in two years.
Yes.
I tell them to, I think we should tell them to go chop wood.
Okay, so, uh, the eight hundred and something included in that is the Bryson property and the Thompson properties. Both of those that he's at, proposing to sell on the, on the agenda. Or buyouts that we paid those people, they're wanting their money back from those buyouts.
Understand. What you're saying is we can't sell that property until we pay that money back.
Right, because, uh, so this.
No, we can sell the property. The property involved to us now.
Get written, something written that we can sell it because this grant is not closed out at this point. Am I right by saying that, John?
Yeah, I believe.
I mean, the grant's not closed out.
No, that's, we can sell it.
What kind of discussions have you had with TDM? That'd be my question.
Well, they told, they told us we could sell it because we were gonna pay the money back. I mean, I think what, they've already paid for the property.
Yes.
For us to sell the property that they paid for before we pay it back, I don't know that we can do that. I didn't understand that we could do that. I'm not saying we can't. I don't.
Yeah, I mean, I just think that we just need something written and writ, and writing that we, that we can legally sell it.
I think it's like.
They'll come back at us later on. Even though there are, we're already having to pay it back, we still need something.
Well, the, the.
Do you know how those deeds read? Do you, KK, on the property? Is it the typical buyout?
No, it's general warranty deeds.
We got deeds that we had go through the buyout that were approved back in fifteen and sixteen. The FEMA had changed rules on, and we've had to redo.
Uh, twenty one of them.
Well, twenty eight of them, because we did seven.
More part of that, yeah.
So is this more money that we are, that they have to pay back?
No, 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 these corrections and language and deed.
Okay.
So they changed.
We see throughout reading.
Well, I don't believe it. I didn't take.
Well, the Bryson and the Thompsons just have general warranty deeds. They do not have, um, Stafford Act on the deeds.
Likely they don't have to change that.
Yes.
Their correction deed.
They're just made in Newton County without Stafford Act on.
My only comment on that, Judge, is outside of the property, you know, that's a whole nother discussion is, I just think it's I don't wanna use the word unfair, but.
I, I, I do believe it's unfair, but, you know, if we don't pay the money back, um, they can put a lien on the county as far as from the comptroller's office. Well, that stops a lot of money from coming for the, like, DA's office, for the victim's assistance. There's, there's a lot of money that comes from the comptroller's office that that will, that will lock up, that.
Yeah.
And I believe it will suspend future assistance as well.
That's, that's not what they said in here. They said that they weren't gonna not help us if we didn't get this paid back all at once. It's what Niem said, but he also said other things. I just think four hundred thousand is, I mean, out of the general fund, right?
Yes.
That's a lot of money out of the.
It is a lot of money.
I mean, out of the general fund, how much do you end up with in the general fund after a, uh?
I mean, the whole thing of it is right now, uh, probably without the bills, it's gonna be about a million, but we don't know that that's all gonna be filled over because all the bills aren't in until the end of January, January and February. But the whole thing of it is, is we don't have all the tax dollars in either. To, for, right off that, we're gonna be paying four hundred thousand dollars back in January. I wouldn't propose it to pay it back to January. I'd at least do it till, I would at least extend it out till March. So when we have more tax dollars coming in.
I think.
And also, we would have a cha, a chance to sell this property. The Bryson property should pay at least, should bring in at least, I would say five hundred thousand dollars.
Well, then, the two twenty seven was due in May of this year.
Yeah, I think we're extending that far as we can.
Yeah, we can go ahead and pay the two hundred, but, but I would go ahead and, are we gonna go with the realtors to put this property up for sale?
Yes. I just, you know, as far as like the comptroller's office, that would also be SB twenty two.
Right.
Money for the sheriff's department and the, uh, DA's office, that would, that would potentially put a block on it.
Right? I know we gotta pay it back. Four hundred thousand, y'all paid eight hundred and eighty something last year, right?
It was right in acres.
And then four hundred thousand, so the taxpayers in less than twenty-four months have paid one point two million dollars to TDM or whoever. And that's just, that's.
From back, like the one, the money that we paid back last year was from Hurricane.
Hurricane Lake, yes.
Twenty eleven.
Yeah, but it still comes out of the tax.
And that property right there, that property should be able to go back up for sale too, which you told me last night that half of that property was already given to SRA.
Yes, that was part of the agreement. They, they agreed to do the, uh, the tear, the tear downs for, you know, the property.
So the comptroller has an excess of thirty billion dollars in, in. So it's not like they need that four hundred thousand operating. They just want their, they want us to pay it back.
Yes.
Well, it's, you know, we, we got judge's signatures on all that paperwork that we would agree to follow the guidelines and all of those things. The problem is, is that, uh, we don't wanna ruin our reputation. And I, I totally agree with you. We, we can't just, you know, go along with what, what, whatever. They, they probably want us to do, and, and we can negotiate and, but I think that overall, we, we really need to meet our obligations at all costs. So we can go forward and have a clear path in the future. So that whatever we need, uh, they will be willing to help us. And like, like the judge was saying, all of those programs that we are already involved, we, we don't wanna jeopardize. And so, uh, somehow or another, we need to, you know, negotiation is probably necessary. But, uh, but it overall, you know, I know, you know, when you look at it overall, like you said, the comptroller has an excess of thirty billion or whatever. But that's their business. It's just like us, you know, where, wherever we land at, and we had two million dollar excess where we slept up to us to, to dictate or, or obligate where it need to go. And we don't have an outsider telling us what we do with our money. You know what I'm saying? If overall, uh, we represent Newton, Newton County, and, uh, we have got to meet our obligations else. You know, we gonna lose some, some base value and reputation. That's the only thing that I'm. Well, I say the only thing, the main thing that I'm concerned with is going forward is that I don't wanna be this little county over there that's always failing to meet deadlines. And you know, I, I mean, it's just human nature that I don't care what position you are in this, in this society, that you're gonna figure out this person don't have the money. And I'm not, no, I'm not gonna let him have, lend him no money. You know what I'm saying? Uh, I want us to be able to, uh, improve our reputation. We went through some bad times in the last four years because some unfortunate issues, but I think that we have just about figured out that we can come out of it with the help of God and, and good judgment. And, uh, and I, like I said, I totally agree that we have to be very careful with predicting what we gonna need in the future. Especially this upcoming year, after we've unset a budget and all of this. So, uh, yeah, we need to negotiate, but overall, in my opinion, we, we really need to do what we can to show good faith to pay this back, to pay what we are already obligated. It's their money. They sent it to us. We just put, dumped it unfortunately. We, we didn't have all the details. And we just dumped it over into general fund, which it should have been in a separate account. Because this was, was grant money, and it should have been in a separate account. So we wouldn't have been mistaken that it was the county's money to operate off of.
This money was actually paid out to Bobby Kins property.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. They paid, but we owe them money.
Now we have to pay, we, the county has to buy that property, pay TDM back for what TDM paid for the people.
But we owe them three hundred and something thousand now.
Yes, two hundred and something, two hundred.
That was due last night.
Last night.
Two twenty seven.
It was delivered in Ronnie.
I think we all paid that in January. Then, how much that leave you then?
We have eight hundred and, I think it's eight hundred.
Eight hundred and six thousand.
Some of this, yeah. That we owe for these buyouts right here. I think there's nine buyouts of that property you're gonna sell every bit of that.
Yes, you, you know, if you, I, I agree with what you said, Philip. Everything you said, won't argue with any of it. I just sit here and I think about Newton County, and I think about, you know, I've learned a lot about the county. Uh, the government body in the last twelve months. And what I see is, um, a very low pay scale for county employees. And little to no health benefits. I mean, if you try to put your spouse on, you know, county insurance, you're paying twelve hundred dollars a month. Um, and I go back to, when we talk about this money and, and you know it being their money, the fact of the matter is the federal government and TDM and all of those people are operating off our money. It's all tax dollars throughout, throughout the country. Now, I understand it's, it's obligated to them or it's, it's assigned to them to operate on, but I just think we should pay it out. We should ask for a six-year period to pay it out. I, I don't want the judge and the general fund being strapped. It's not gonna change the commissioner's money.
We're good enough.
No, but I mean, what we get each year, what we get each year is gonna stay the same because we get that percentage before it's spread out. But it's gonna impact the general fund.
Yes.
It's gonna impact the operation of.
From what TDM said, uh, they wouldn't, they wouldn't accept that, that long of a term payout.
So you have the, uh, agreement?
No, I don't have an agreement. This is just verbal talking.
Yeah, there's nothing in writing.
No, there's nothing in writing yet. That's what we're here to discuss.
As Chief Ellis said that?
Yes, Ellis and Chief Kidd.
Kidd said that also?
Yes, two years. Most they go, we won't go three. Yeah, he said, it's not their money. They're just a pass through.
He also said that if Con Riznick had any fault in it, that they would stand good for that because that was their contractor, and they did, and he hasn't, so.
Well, we're looking at.
Yes, now he interrupted, but that's one of the things he said. That makes me mad. It's looking back on the years. He said this county had been taken advantage of by whoever the intermediaries are between this county and the state.
I agree.
Because the stuff that Crystal and I have done in the last couple of days, updating those deeds and getting them done, every one of those passed muster five or six years ago. Every one of them.
Shouldn't have.
Paid out on, signed off on them, and then they're coming back saying, sorry, I didn't get done this way.
No. We're gonna ask for this money back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
We, we, everything's.
Jumped through the hoops to, to change twenty eight deeds.
None of it had anything to do with any of us, anything that we did. It was whoever signed off on them back then to pass muster to go.
And, and again, for, for the things we're talking about, that was Con Riznick on, on this last six years. And Mr. Kidd said, you know, if Con Riznick made mistakes, they're our contractor, we'll stand good for it. But he's not here today, and he's saying we need that money in two years. And we know that they had, they had some accountability and responsibility in the failures of these.
Yeah, because they turned the money over knowing they didn't have the documents, the contracts, all of that. I mean, I have emails from past employees from this county saying, look, I don't have the contract, but I'll get it to you, but you please push the money through. They pushed the money through. I mean, we have emails. Con Riznick should have said, no, until I have that signed contract, you're not getting the money. Somebody needs to be held accountable. That man sat right there where Phillip said, said he would hold them accountable, and he's not here today. He's holding anybody accountable. He's coming to you and saying, we want our money. So basically, everything he said to us that day was just wasted air.
And he's saying he wants it in two years. That's, that's the part, you know, I, I don't know, um, I agree with Philip. I, it don't look like we're gonna get out of paying this money back, unfortunately. But two years, I mean, that would have been three million dol, I mean, two million dollars in.
Out of that five million grant, it's costing Newton County two million dollars, and what we got out of it was worthless property. Off the tax rolls, you can't do anything with it. It's just there.
It's actually costing us money because we're having to, because it says in the contract, we gotta maintain it. Well, in my, in my precinct, some of those buyout properties are right in the heart of the town. And you can't, I mean, we, we spent a lot of money this year cleaning that property up because the trees are overhanging, houses are only joining. So it is a cost to the county.
Yeah, that's the worthless property.
But I had a question, excuse me, but, so you're saying we can turn around and, and turn and sell this property and put it back on the tax roll now?
Yes. Right now, we can do that, Judge?
The ones that, the ones that we're having to pay back.
It belongs to Newton County.
It belongs to Newton County.
Even before we pay the money back, is my question.
That money is.
It belongs to Newton County.
So do you recommend getting something written from them?
I do, because, you know.
Absolutely.
I don't want them coming back and saying, hey, and I, they should easily, if they would allow some profits, put it in writing.
Yeah.
Because that's the thing we wanna do, go back and.
Yeah.
Carry those a little harder.
Yeah.
Yeah, you sold property, you hadn't paid us back.
Well, you know, this whole thing brought to the core.
Yeah.
The simple fact that we're dealing with stuff back in fifteen, all the way up to now.
Yeah.
You know, I, I haven't had a whole lot to do with any of this, but I remember coming in on the very first front end four years ago, uh, when TDM, when we were doing some negotiations with TDMs and some of the other contractors that were out there. And none of them wanted, I, I kept looking on some of the, what they were using as their application process and the whole nine yards, and I started looking at it, and I got to thinking, they're not wanting to take responsibility for anything. You know, they're letting these people apply and approving them right off the bat, and they can't even prove that they own property. You know, it was, it was, I, I was highly suspect of the whole program when I first got here. And I can imagine that went down six to eight years ago.
Well, being here.
And all we can do is clean up the mess now.
Yes, and being here just the past twelve months, you know, if, from an outsider looking in, it looks like the court has failed miserably. Uh, over the past four years, but being here twelve months, I, I can say I don't cast rocks at the court.
Well, I'm gonna tell you what, the court voted on what was presented to them. The judges over the last eight to ten years brought forward what the people who they were counting on, the guy told them to report.
Right.
And they voted accordingly.
Yeah.
And all they did was vote according to the expert advice that they were supposedly getting from these outside companies.
Yeah.
And, and I, I think too, that in your agreement or their agreement to pay back the money, that it has to stay, that we can sell these properties to be able to pay that money back. So that sure that is noted in there.
Well, they're, they're, they're wanting something from the county in early January. Nice reason I put.
Agreement signed.
Yes.
Pay it anyway, but I would.
Yes, they wanted, they wanted an agreement from the county, uh, for them to consider in January.
And, and you know, and I'm not, I'm not bashing you on the recommendation of four hundred thousand. I'm, I'm trying to say, you know, that's your, I, I want the general public to understand you're talking about paying them out of your operating budget. We have an operating budget completely outside of what you're talking about. It's not gonna impact us if you pay four hundred thousand, our budgets and our operations. It's gonna impact you, it's gonna impact the people that work or, or tap into that budget. So I, I'm with Commissioner White. I mean, if, if we could pay the two hundred and twenty seven thousand back in January, that'd be good. But then set up something four or less and.
There's a hundred and seventy three thousand left out of the four hundred thousand. If we can help get them to understand that we, yeah, early, uh, twenty twenty four, we would like to try and pay them four hundred thousand. But right now, uh, as of January first, we, we have not collected any tax money, any funds. And that we don't, we can get that to them possibly first quarter, at the end of the first quarter, or maybe we can buy some time to give them that other hundred and seventy three thousand. But the two twenty seven, we, we, that's oh, way past due. And, uh, we, we really got, almost got, have to do something about that one. Cause that's a totally different grant.
Yes, totally different.
Right.
Hurricane Lake.
Yeah.
And those, those properties that we paid back last year and the, a, a quarter of these that we're paying back this year, we need to pull all those properties and see about changing the deeds on those and making sure that we can sell those as well. The ones that have not been given to SRA.
Okay, and I think a lot of those properties, maybe it's the beans, sands, the, they're, they're.
Make sure that they're not, by, we can put it back on the tax rolls if possible.
You know, I suppose.
Yes, sir.
Instead of, I don't know how many negotiations have been had. It doesn't sound to me like very many. Like I want to eat a trickle. Instead of entering into an agreement, why don't we send up a proposal? Here's what we think we can do, and then at least make them refuse, you, 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 you turn it down a little bit.
Well, basically, that's, that's what we're doing, Mike. You know, we'll send them a proposal in January of what, what we can do.
We'll send it a agreement, so.
Yeah, but you know, basically, that's what it's gonna be, a proposal. Uh, you know, they could either accept it or decline it. They know this is what we want.
Take action. So the approval to take action, as is stated on the, uh, agenda here, uh, TDM receivables. So we are agreeing to send a, a proposal, uh, in, in January. And, uh, at the same time, should we request that, and this is gonna be to close out, it's going primarily need. and, uh, at the same time, should we request that, and this is gonna be to, to close out, it's going, primarily need to be two agree, uh, proposals. One is to, uh, meet our obligations on the two thousand eleven grant receivable, which is two hundred and twenty-seven thousand. And, uh, the other, like I said, seventy, one seventy-three, uh, we'd send a proposal on that. And same time, we, before we, when we get to the, uh, the, the selling of a property, we've got to have the letter from them stating that it is, it's out of our hand, we have, we have released this to Newton County, and it can be resold, you know, and that's, that's for the second payment. Yeah, for, for selling the property, so is that what we all agreeing on?
Yeah, well, I know we have the seven properties that we just cleaned up this year, uh, which is Bryce Thompson's, um, one on twenty-six, twenty-six.
Fourteen fourteen.
Fourteen fourteen.
And one on sixty-three, near the river.
Have a list of all of.
Yeah.
They did inspections.
Did they come, did they come out and redo this?
Even inspections took them, TM did.
I think, so the way this is said, in the form of a payment plan, I go back to this, I mean, pay the two twenty-seven in January and say we can pay the rest over the next four years. Two hundred and one thousand, two hundred and, two hundred thousand and some change over the next four years. Put it out there as a proposal, I mean, worst they can do is say, absolutely not, you know, and then we can say, can you schedule a meeting with the Commissioner's Court and our county attorneys, and let's sit down and talk about it, you know, in a workshop fashion? Get the same group to come down here and promise the world, and, well, I shouldn't say that, they didn't promise anything, they said it would work, said they'd work, they didn't promise anything, I shouldn't have said that, but. I mean, I just don't think that, I think that. That's fair, I mean, how much, I, I ask you one of those, how much money is in the general fund?
I have to go back and boil, I mean, I can tell you what's in every day.
No, 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 after the tax, how much money does the general fund have to operate on?
I have to get back with you.
Six million dollars about, it's about six million dollars, six or seven million dollars. And so you're saying, you know, that's, that's a pretty good percentage of our.
Well, TDM, TDM did tell me a four-year plan was, would not be acceptable.
We just seem to be real, I mean, cautious, money we do have in the general.
Oh, I, I know.
Rebuilding the courthouse, we have to pay that upfront.
I know.
Before we get reimbursed for that, so we just need to make sure, just because it's sitting in there right now, we have to realize.
They did say a, a four-year plan was not acceptable, and.
Well, I, this is my thing, I think that once we start going off this land, that we can pay them back pretty quickly.
That, that.
And that's their understanding.
That was my thoughts too.
Yeah, I think that's their.
So, I mean.
Yeah, the brass property is what, a hundred and twenty?
Six acres or something like that, it's not a bunch of acres, and I've had, you had somebody that was interested, and, and I mean, I know a couple more that wanted to bid on it, so. I mean, if we start putting this property up, that this money that we sell will go towards that debt.
Yes.
Because that's what it's for, I mean, I would hope that we could at least get four hundred thousand dollars for the brass property because that's what the man was paid out.
He was paid four ninety-seven, so I would like to at least, you know, if you get five thousand acre for prime hunting. You know, it's, it's bordering the Sabine River and Cow Creek.
Cow Creek. I don't know, I don't know what the land is right now, but it should be able to.
Judge, I. You're the one that is the financial officer, and you, you're gonna, it's gonna hit you.
Oh, yeah, it's gonna hit, it's gonna hit the county, so.
I'm sitting here thinking.
Well, looking at the, uh, you know, that's, that, when they said, uh, two-year plan, so. You know, that's when I come up with the four hundred thousand at first, you know, you take four hundred thousand plus the sale of the properties, and then pay the remaining balance in twenty twenty-five.
When they said it won't take four, they want two, go through it. And then come on, that's how you negotiate.
Yeah, and, and, and I think, to me, setting, them being here in front of the court in a workshop is gonna carry more weight than just a phone call, or, you know, two-on-one, and, you know, cause it kinda got you to, you know, know we're gonna do this, but when they've got the entire court, we, we, you have some backing there, and our county attorney's present, it may carry a little bit more leverage, we may get, may not get four, may get three years out of it, like you're saying.
Well, you know, I think a lot of that meeting was, you know, we had the congressional support, the state representatives, state senators, a lot of that was just show.
Okay.
It was. No, because they need their support.
And this is federal money, right?
The kid.
And it's federal money we're sending to Ukraine, it's just crazy.
Yeah, we're bringing in too much, oh, like, I mean, the county, the country is, is screwed up, we all know this. I mean, when, when you get to naming all those things that are broke, it ain't just Newton County, this country is broke. And that, just like you just mentioned, that's, if, if that, that's not a sad case where we're sending our money to Ukraine, and we got people right here all over this country that, that, that's making a decision daily, uh, whether or not they're gonna eat, or they're gonna buy their medicine. And it is, it's sad, but we can't, we can't lend ourselves to that, we gotta keep it.
Well, the only thing.
Down to government.
I, I, I agree with you a hundred percent, that, that is not, but the, the fact remains is that we have got to push back on, we can, we can't pay this back in two years and operate, I mean, we're gonna be broke again.
You made eight hundred dollars back there.
I, I, that's, that's where I'm at with it, tell them.
We'll, we'll send them, uh, all we can do is send them three-year proposal.
Three-year proposal.
Yeah, I'm into a meeting and telling you, it's gonna be a two-year payback schedule, that's not an negotiation. That's not, they just came to tell you what it's gonna be and.
Well, they said it's, it's. It's basically, they, they were saying it's not up to them, it's, it's, they're just intermediary for the federal government.
Yes.
Christian has a doctor's appointment, can I go ahead and roll the bills out?
We, we, we.
On the next, and then we're gonna have a sign, and then wait and go get her to. She's gotta get to the doctor.
Okay.
Yeah.
What was that name?
As we mentioned all this before we made the budget this year, that we knew this was coming up.
It's obligation, we, we owe those.
We knew this day was coming before the budget was made this year.
So we had lots of discussions on the, on the receivables.
I think the sale of the profit, uh, property is gonna be what bails us out, and I think that we'll be able to meet our obligations if all of that matures. Uh, but we, like I said, doc, and proper documentation and those kind of things, we gotta make sure that we don't, uh, whenever we do finalize the repayment or the receivables, that that's the end of it, we don't wanna go two years down the road, just like he's cutting picking, uh, idols and stuff, uh, we, we don't wanna, we wanna end this, this saga. And that's what I, I'm really wanting to see us do.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion, and y'all see any need to change anything on it. I'll make a motion that in January, we'll pay the two hundred twenty-seven thousand receivable, uh, and, you know, propose a three-year payment plan with the sale of the properties upon TDM's approval to sell the properties.
I'll second that motion.
All right, motion made by me, second by Commissioner White, all in favor? All against? All right, all right, we're gonna move, uh, Christian's got a doctor's appointment, so we're gonna move the bill, paint up to this item number two. Yes.
Five hundred thirteen thousand, six hundred forty-nine dollars and eighteen cents, District Attorney State Fund, one dollar fifty cents, Rhodeham Ridge General, thirteen, thirteen hundred eighty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents, Commissioner Special Precinct One, two thousand, seven hundred twenty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents, Commissioner Special Precinct Two, three thousand, seven hundred fifty-one dollars and eleven cents, Commissioner Special Precinct Three, four thousand, four hundred eighty-five dollars and ninety-three cents, Commissioner Special Precinct Four, five thousand, two hundred two dollars and eleven cents, Sheriff Contraband, five hundred sixty-three dollars, Solid Waste Disposal, three thousand, four hundred seventy-nine dollars and twenty-one cents, Voter Registration, one hundred sixty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents, Newton County Library, one hundred thirty dollars and eleven cents, and Courthouse Emergency Grant, twenty-six thousand, one hundred seventy-two dollars and fifty cents, for a total of all funds, one hundred sixty-one thousand, seven hundred twenty-two dollars and seventy-two cents.
Hang on, we got one coming to you.
I make the motion there, we pay the bills.
Second, all right, motion made by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Benson, all in favor? All against? Figure that's start my.
Thank you.
And borrow your opinion.
That's good.
And what kind of commissioner don't bring opinion?
Lucky I'm even here.
All right, we got that taken care of, we're gonna go back up to item number two. Approve to list for sale county-owned properties in Old Salem, former the Bryce Property, and the Dewerville, uh, former the Thompson Properties with the profits to, to be used to date toward TDM receivable. And that's the properties we just discussed a little while ago on the previous, um, and I will get approval from TDM to sell these, but, you know, we vote as a court to sell them.
I, I, I'll make the motion to sell the properties. Can I, so I can only make the motion for these properties, cause that's what's listed, so I'll make the motion to sell the properties listed, being the Bryce Property and the Thompson's Properties, once we have a release from TDM to do so.
A second motion.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Powell, second by Commissioner White, all in favor?
Yeah.
All against? Okay, item number three, uh, is, is receiving petition request in formation of emergency services district number six for, uh, EMS services, or it says ambulance service, in Newton County, and set a date for a public hearing. Now, we've got the petition, but, uh, they have all the required signatures and the money, but it has to be verified by, uh, Melissa's office, so we're just gonna skip this, so January, give her time to verify the list of names on the petition.
No action?
No action on this item.
I'll make a motion, and we make no action on item number three today.
Second, motion is made by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Benson, all in favor?
Right.
All right, moving down to item number four, is take action to establish a procedure and guideline fees for information requests, including those that require additional staffing and or overtime hours to provide.
That one is, get your name on it? Yeah, um, I don't know if Commissioner Kelly wants to speak now or after, I don't, I don't know, uh, so what this, uh, where this come from, Judge, is in my office, uh, I often have emails that are quarantined. Every day, we get quarantined emails, and, you know, I'm scared that we're gonna miss a information request and get our hands slapped by not making that ten-day period or what have you, and I know that throughout the county, that has happened, you know, some offices gotten them, and well, that's for this one, and forwarded to it, and it got buried in emails, so thinking about that, and then also there is information requests that uh, are above and beyond the capabilities of an, of a, uh, an office to do with the staff that they have, or, you know, I mean, all these offices are staffed to do their daily, you know, day-to-day stuff and nothing more than that. So what this is, is I talked to Courtney Ponte about this, if this was even legal, she said it was, John, I think you can confirm that?
What's that, on the email?
Yeah, to be able to charge for public information.
Oh, yes, it is.
Okay.
I would probably suggest, uh, you know, I know when other counties do it, other, uh, districts do it, and other organizations do it. Uh, I would suggest figuring out what would be the going rate for all of it, and start doing it.
And, and one of the things that Courtney had suggested, I thought was a great idea, was setting up an, uh, an email address for the county and communicate it in our, on our website and to the public, is if you have a public information request, you send it to this email address. Or different ways that, but this request today is basically to charge someone, and I think the county attorney's office is the right one to do it, to develop a procedure for the entire county to manage public information request. Not getting into the weeds today of how we do that, and what it looks like, I threw that out there about the email address, cause I thought that was a great ideal where the judge's office is not looking for them, and we're not looking.
Well, I think what's happening, that they're coming in at different offices, and, uh, different offices have different procedures, and dealing with them, and it all needs to be uniform throughout the county, uh, some people are filing with the clerk's office, some people aren't, uh, it's just, it's all different, every office that one goes to is handled differently, and it all needs to be handled the same, it's coming from the county. So you're absolutely right in that, uh, one unified method needs to be done, and the amount charged for the process needs to be set.
Well, if the email address set up, who's gonna monitor the email address?
That would be in the procedure, I, I.
They would, they would come up, uh, I'm sure a procedure would be set up on who would have the administrative authority to monitor that.
Okay.
On a daily basis.
Yeah, I know, sometimes, you know, like the judge's office, we get a hundred fifty, two hundred emails a day, you know, it's, it's just.
That's, I mean, when you said that about the quarantine, I had one right after I first hired on, uh, as auditor, had one come in, and it went in my junk mail, had no idea, well, I got a letter from the Attorney General's Office saying that I was out of compliance with this, um, public information request that this woman sent, and she turned me to the pub, uh, to the Attorney General's Office. Well, I had Shannon come in, and Shannon researched my whole email, and it was in the junk file, and so, with that being said, it was a huge request. Crystal can be my witness, probably that many copies, literally that many copies. Then the woman refused to come pick it up. Well, I ain't gonna make that many copies, and mom, we had to go back for years, for loving his last ten years, what did Crystal?
It took us a week and a half.
Yeah, last ten years to go pull every invoice for every copier that the county had, and then she didn't show up to pick it up. I wanted to find out her address, I could just go drop it on the front door. But yes, I agree that I think things should be charged, and I think at that time, Courtney may have reached out to see if we could charge because that's a lot of money, we have to pay for every copy that we, we make in our copiers, we have to buy every bit of that paper. So the taxpayers are paying for all that, so, I mean, just like that, she wanted all that information, she didn't want it electronically, she wanted it printed out, and then she didn't even come pick it up. So, yeah. And we do, our office receives public information, I get it from K K, I get them from the judge's office, I give them directly from me.
I see that, I'm wondering if it needs to check.
Yeah, I get them from wherever, yeah.
And, and I, I would say this, Judge, I'll put this action on the moment here, I, I try to communicate everything we do in precinct four. Uh, it gets me, it gets me in a little bit of trouble sometimes, but it's not trying to hide anything, it's just trying to get a system, a procedure that actually becomes more supportive of the, the residents, it's actually gonna help people get their public information request processed quicker, and, and, uh, that, that's my point here today, is trying to. Get their public information request processed quicker and and uh that that's my point here today is trying to. Help the citizens make sure they get it in front of the right people. And then help the, I'm gonna say it for myself, help me make sure I don't re- re-release something that should have been redacted by the commit- uh the uh county attorney's office. And then at the end of the day is if if it. If it takes away from the my constituents on the job we're charged to do, I think that we should ask for some monetary support, you know? Bring somebody in or work somebody over or some. Get it on the weekends, you know, or some whatever maybe.
And it cost us. Paper and labor. And and then another thing is that uh. You know, if it's a legitimate, uh sometime we all know that. Barocacy and all of that stuff just flare out for just because people are angry. Seems like a lot of folk are angry in this this country today. There's one reason because that government.
I'm angry down here today, by the way, sir. I'm angry today.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. And and it's easy for people to uh just out of anger and not really think about what they're asking. To put a big task on the county and like you said, that took a lot of your time to to print out uh four hundred, six hundred pages, however many it was. And wasn't worth it, was it? Was Casey really sincere? They tried to reach out and get verbal, talk to somebody, schedule a meeting, you know, the judge is responsible for things. We're responsible for things. Everybody has a responsibility. And if I I would hope my citizens in my precinct would give me a chance to explain to them and to give them an answer of any question they have. Before they just send an email to the to the clerk, to to uh to the treasurer's office to to uh ask.
Send the letter.
You know, everything that happened since uh twenty ten, you know, I I I'd rather them give me an opportunity to help them understand, especially if I know. You know, if I was involved and I know all the details, but if I didn't, I would tell them, you know what I'm saying? I just hoped that going forward seemed like it's it's a trend. Uh, folk are mad and and everything that pops up. They wanna make something out of it. You know, questioning everybody just and some of them don't even have uh good justification. Uh, we just don't want. This is a good uh time and I think it's a good, it's a good task to uh to go ahead and put some kind of. Something to slow down just just maybe if they have to pay for all of that, I think they'll think twice about it.
Yeah, but you know, some of some of it, you know, people, some people feel like that we're trying to suppress them getting information. You know, even uh some of the media, you know, they're like, well. Why are we being charged for information we're requesting? You know, there's a provision that, you know. The media doesn't have to be charged, you know, so you know, I'm I've been getting complaints from all around. You know, why are we being charged? Well, you know, it costs time and money to do this. Uh. You know, we just don't have a, we don't have interns running around doing this for us, you know. Um, you're just, a lot of people are worried about, you know, we're trying to suppress information, public information to them. And that's, I think that's the biggest worry.
Well, I can, I from. I have not seen that of this courts in the last twelve months. Uh, and I'm certainly not trying to do that. And that's not what.
But that's probably not some people perception.
Sure.
You know, and that's that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Is that we we uh we should promote. Uh, like you said, uh, you know, being. Everything we can to put it out on our website, on our county website. And if there's questions, yeah, it'd be good that they use, like the email thing, I think that's a good idea too. That they can send it in to a certain email, but uh that if it's requiring a lot of unnecessary paperwork. Well, I'd like for that person to have something to to, you know, give them a thought that, hey, this might cost me twenty five dollars. Is it worth that to me? And uh I just think that uh it it's a good thing and like, but John was saying, uh, most counties and whatnot already does that. And it kind of slows down the the pace in which, you know, some of the unnecessary stuff coming in.
Well, the. I could see, you know. That would, you know, if you want to, you want this information, but takes you. Three hundred pages to get the ten pages of information that you're really looking for. You know, I can, I can see it on there. But Mr. Kelly, do you wanna?
Three minutes, sir?
Yes. One and a half.
No, I'm just joking.
For citizens. So this morning, before I get into my statement. I've heard the assistant district attorney say that uh the system itself is rotten before. He sure he says there has to be accountability. You yourselves have said there has to be accountability. And Courtney has remembered that citizens fund the government in advance. Government administers the daily business of the citizens and then reports back to the citizens after business is done. If any citizen has a question on how the government administers the business of the people. The government has to provide documented accountability to the people by law. I requested the county banking information for twenty eighteen to twenty twenty two because the county administration of twenty eighteen to twenty twenty two spent millions of dollars. A lot of these funds was free money from grants, which also came from the citizens' pockets. That had to be repaid due to mismanagement. And what I personally believe as misdeeds by those of the new share responsibility to the citizens, I say that at all levels. TDM, SRA, Newton, across the board. To require payment for this information that I'm requesting amounts to a double taxation on the citizen. And creates the suppression of information from citizens. This information was supposed to be provided properly to the citizens in the first place. To date, it has not been. So in effect, the action proposed today is the exact opposite of what this court has branded as transparent and accountable in its actions. And this year's court has been very good at transparency and accountability. I have personally asked for accountability on the record for almost three years now. If accountability was attained then, it would not be an issue now, and yet it is still an issue today. This court just approved a um a proposal for repayment plan specifically to address this mismanaged money. Yet no accountability on why this money got paid out, who authorized the payment, to whom it was paid for services rendered. Not to mention why the county poppers went from two and a half million dollars in the bank to a two point two million dollar budget deficit in the four year time span. So effectively, this court administration is telling citizens, too bad, so sad, now move on and be optimistic about our county's future with your money. I request on the record that this court approved an outside forensic audit in their January twenty twenty four commissioners' court meeting to address this specific issue. I would guess the end report would reveal more than process failure and reveal human due. Either way, accountability can be addressed on every finding. Until that time, I will continue requesting public information and I expect all my requests to be fulfilled by the rule of law. With complete transparency and accountability from our county government. Which again, we the people paid upfront for sure. Respectfully.
Thank you, Chris Kelly.
The judge, if I could, I'd like to make a motion to. Establish. Uh, how to word this? Uh, how to word this? So I I would like to say the motion that we uh. That we select a group or department to create a county wide procedure. That manages all public information requests. And if I need to, I can say I'd like to make the motion that we ask the county attorney's office to create that procedure.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner Powell.
Motion to establish a group, you said?
Uh, well, I changed it. I I'll just say I'd like to make the motion that we. Ask direct, whatever the right word is, John, the county attorney's office to develop a county wide procedure to manage all public information requests.
Ask would be fine. I I don't know. It it may be something to where you may need more than one office to get together.
Well.
And or like a committee to figure out what, how they're gonna deal with it all because all of them are different right now.
And and when I talked with current uh Courtney about this, even if it was beginning, I mean, we went as far as to talk about involving other offices and even private citizens. So if we ask the county attorney's office to create the procedure, who that office involves is totally up to them.
Okay.
Basically, it's just the, what I'm asking the court to do is get the county attorney's office to create this procedure, who they use, how they do it, what. Did you get any of that, KK? What do you have there as a motion?
To select the district attorney's office to create a procedure for county wide management of public information requests.
Wow, I should ask her to say that again when I come.
That's perfect. She said that better.
Also. I didn't, I forgot to mention that I provided the county clerk with a drive. I'm not asking for.
And and I'll just say this to the court today. My this line item. Is not. The result of one request. Every day I come into my office, I worry about those quarantine emails. And I try to get in them and some of them I can, some of them I can't. And quite honestly, I look at the name on it and and I delete some of them and go. Oh, well, you know, I hope there wasn't an information request. So it's it's a lot bigger than one request. It's something that we, that I I'm asking for, for sure.
I second that motion.
Motion is made by Commissioner Powell, second by Commissioner White. All in favor?
Uh.
Uh. All against? All right.
Second by Benson.
Oh, I'm sorry. Second by Commissioner Benson.
Okay.
My left side over here. I don't hear too good out on my left here. All right, uh, item number five, take action to establish speed limits as follows. Uh, on. A, we got uh County Road forty one twenty eight at twenty five miles an hour with the exception of a ten mile per hour in a curve. County Road forty one twenty nine, forty one thirty, forty one thirty one, forty one thirty three, uh thirty five and forty one thirty eight to be all set at ten miles per hour.
The judge, these are uh, these roads under B, they are, some of them already have ten mile an hour signs on them. And what we're doing in my office is where we can't find that documentation to where that road was set, we're bringing it before the court and we're creating a. A journal to where in the years to come, you can go look at mile per hour on site and we can show when we approve that in court because you. You have to approve it to get below, I think, thirty or thirty five, I forget the number. But uh I visited with the residents in this area. They they are, haven't had anyone that's not in favor of this. This is that their request and uh. It's just, these are, these are really tight, curvy neighborhoods. Uh. It's. It's the right thing to do in my opinion.
Well, you know your precinct better than I do, but twenty miles kind of slow itself. You gonna go ten?
Yeah, I was.
That's my tree truck.
And and it.
Idles at probably.
And that's what it, so so on these roads, uh, when you, when you turn off the main road, it's they're dirt roads. And there's literally like, there's a house here and a house here and there's houses all the way around the curve, the loop. I think it is forty one, thirty one. And then we, you turn on the other one over there, it's the same thing, you know, it's just uh. I, they're post, some of them are posted at ten now. Uh.
No, I'm just saying my truck probably idles at.
Yes, and there's kids, um, these kids walk the roads, ride bicycles in the road. I mean, if if I tried to increase it above ten on those roads that are already posted, I'd be in trouble. Uh, I think ten's the right, right speed limit.
In the summertime, you have a real big dust issue.
Well, I put rap on these roads.
Okay.
Well, with the exception of one, sorry.
So. I'll make the motion to uh establish speed limits on County Road forty one twenty eight at twenty five with ten mile per hour curve. And the rest forty one twenty nine, forty one thirty, forty one thirty one, forty one thirty three. Uh, forty one thirty five and forty one thirty eight to be all set at ten miles per hour.
I second it.
All right, motion made by me, second by Commissioner Benson. All in favor?
Uh.
All against? All right, moving down to item number six. Do we have any budget amendments? All right, no budget amendments. We've already paid the bills, so.
I make that motion. We adjourned.
Motion to adjourn. By Commissioner Benson, second by Commissioner White. All in favor?
Uh.
All against?
I want to recamp.
Hey, Judge.